Yeah.
So this is the first budget workshop. Planning for our 2021, 2022 fiscal year and. I want to thank everybody for participating. It's it's a very informal. Setting. We do have non arranged participation at the start of the meeting. I'll start with that here shortly. In case anybody who's on the line wants to say anything and then. What I thought we could do because there's a lot of information here. This is. Mostly related or all related to the general fund. And I know Justin's worked very hard to put together a nice memo and a draft. Line item by line item budget for us. I don't expect everybody to have everything memorized. I don't expect everybody to understand everything. I haven't been through all of it myself. I've flipped through it. It looks looks well prepared. But I thought what we'd do is just after we take the non arranged participation, we'll let. Justin go through his memo, go through some of the assumptions he's made or some of the things that he has been thinking about, whether he's been talking with Marie or gotten input from others. And he can just point out things familiarize us with what's there. We can go then we can go section by section through the line item a little bit to review the detail if we want. The intent is to get together again next Wednesday. So if if we, you know, if there aren't a lot of questions tonight, that's completely okay. It's expected even. Some of the stuff needs time to sink in a little bit and. But obviously, if we have questions. There's no problem in asking them at any point in time during the conversation. So. If that sounds okay to everybody. I'll ask the audience or ask if there's any non arranged participation for tonight's meeting. If so, please use the raise your hand feature. Carol, if you could just informally take notes of, you know, who's here, write down the. I'd appreciate it, please.
Okay, I have that started. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there's there's no formal roll call. You know, everybody can look at the participants window, see who's here. I see we have Justin and Michelle and Dan and. And I think Marie, did I see Marie?
Mm hmm.
Yep. Yep. Okay. And it's like we have almost all of council. I don't see Zach.
No.
Who else are we missing?
I think that's everybody.
I think that's everybody, right? Yeah, I'm usually used to count to seven, but we don't have Julie. So count to six tonight. So. If I don't see any non arranged, we'll jump right in. Justin, I'll turn it over to you. You can you can share your screen if you want. Or just talk. I think everybody has a copy of what of the packet in front of them. Is that correct?
Yep.
I do.
Why don't you why don't you share your why don't you just share the memorandum so people that are looking can can see it there.
Yeah, let me.
That means I won't be able to see anybody.
Oh, sorry, Marie.
Let me bring it up.
Actually, you know what? I'm gonna pop out and pop back in again and pull this up on my computer. So I'll be back.
Okay. Okay, Dustin, the floor is yours.
All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, I'm just setting up my windows. Things things change once I share my screen. All right, so like Sean said, this is, you know, our first budget meeting of the of the season. Typically, general fund gets gets kind of a special place in all of the funds, just because it has. Really kind of the most diverse. Level of services. So, you know, in addition to general fund, we have the water fund sewer fund, solid waste, equipment, tree fund. Sometimes we'll have like a special projects capital improvement fund. But general fund is is the fund that contains. The the bulk of our our general governmental services. Including fire, police assessing, elections clerk. DPW downtown maintenance and and a number of others. So you have a copy of the general of of the the draft general fund. And in in the budget that's been provided, you'll see 1920 activity, which. Is last fiscal years, which has been completed. You have three different columns for what was originally proposed. The budget as of now, which has been amended. And what we are projecting the budget will look like at the end of the fiscal year for for current. In the last two columns, you'll see what what's being proposed for next fiscal year, which is 2122. And then two years out, two fiscal years out, which is 2223. At the on page five, you have the start of the revenues. Which is all of the money coming in from various sources. And then starting on page six, you have appropriations, which is traditionally the the money flowing out or going somewhere. Being paid out for services rendered. And the appropriations is divided into different departments. So you have the the city managers department. Finance Department Attorney, so on and so forth. And each of those departments account for a certain type or set of services. So, you know, just just for example, Parks and Rec contains. All of those expenditures that we, you know, have done for this fiscal year in in the current fiscal year or. The expenditures that we're planning for next fiscal year related to parks and recreation services. So kind of starting back with page one with the memo, I'm just kind of going down the list. For the upcoming fiscal year, which is 202122. We're estimating that the budget, the general fund revenue resulting from. Property taxes is going to go up by $74,900. And then we're this is with that we that number, we have a pretty good handle on. For 2223, we're estimating that it's going to go up by one and a half percent. Just as a as a. A good estimation based on on prior years, you know, what what we've seen. Jamie, have you have a question?
Just to clarifying one. So that 749 is that directly due to the reassessing that just happened or just general some other general increase?
Do you want me to handle that? So that is actually it's it's twofold. There was a 1.4% increase across the board. That is set by the state tax commission on people's taxable values.
Okay.
And then the other, the rest of the growth came from uncappings due to sale of property or new construction.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So so and and just to kind of build on that. The way that we do. Assessing is is on a on a mass appraisal basis. Which means that basically we we group types of of buildings, types of homes into. Similar groups.
Neighborhoods.
What was that?
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods. And then the the both the state and the county. Give, you know, estimated percent increases. And then as we kind of go through and, you know, do our our regular assessing work. Which does include, you know, visiting homes, you know, visiting those properties that that have sold. We we there's there's a figure that gets applied to to the the properties in Dexter.
Okay, thank you.
So then kind of going down the list, the property tax administration fee were allowed to. Apply 1% and we are keeping that the same we've we've proposed to keep that the same at at 1%. With. Revenue sharing from the state. That there's kind of two portions, one that that is constitutional and one that is statutory. Constitutional is is supposed to be guaranteed through the state constitution and statutory is set by. The legislature through their various. Bills that they pass. And and what they they pass on to communities. For the constitutional revenue sharing, we're budgeting that it'll decrease by $20,000. That's a conservative figure just due to the the economic climate that we're in. And with the the statutory side. We have been getting. Kind of. Too too well, so sorry. I'm thinking of of local community stabilization. But but with local community stabilization, typically we get to kind of. We get one payment and then we have been receiving a second payment. Just based on the fact that the state was taking in more than they expected. And so they were passing that on to. Municipalities. And. We're budgeting that we will continue to get it at at least that first payment. But that second payment isn't isn't guaranteed and and that comes from. What was formerly personal property tax, the personal property tax. The 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 state manipulated it so that way, you know. We. Could no longer. Take a a section of of that personal property tax. And so they they've agreed to. Continue reimbursing municipalities for for a portion of that through the the local community stabilization payments.
So, Justin, that how long has that process been going on? For Marie?
Three years.
Three, I think this is the fourth year.
Fourth year and every every received. Or tell me the amount of money that we have not received as promised.
So so the 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 last few years, we we've received more than was initially promised. By by like 100,000 plus per year. That first year payment was was very surprising.
Yeah, basically, Paul, we the the way the law was written is supposed to guarantee local communities 100% reimbursement. For the monies that were lost from personal property tax and the industrial personal property. For public for public safety. And then it also agreed to reimburse people or or people, local units for all of the loss if they had taken in enough money. Well, and they're using the use tax for it. Well, what happened is they took out, they took in a lot more money than they expected to. So they had to, but the way the law is written. Thank you legislatures. They weren't allowed to absorb that excess fund into their own general fund. They had to give it back to the communities. Um, but there is going to be a formula change. I can't remember off the top of my head if it's the state fiscal year that starts in 22 or 23. And once that happens, I don't know what's going to happen to these excess payments. And I don't know how COVID is going to affect them either because the use tax is pretty much service industry based. So, you know, that would that took a big hit in COVID. So I I don't, we have no idea what's going to come in in May. Well, no one may. For the excess for this year.
And you have a guess?
Nope.
Right?
And they're very close mouthed about it. They don't share.
And just throw that number out what it's been just the last two years.
So in 2021. We're projecting that's going to be 369,000. In 201920, last year, it was 373,000. And then.
And this year so far, we've received what or we we expect to receive?
We've received 272,000 so far.
That's across all funds.
Oh, what was that?
Oh, no, nope. Sorry, wrong line. We've received 180,000 in local community stabilization so far. And we're projecting. Well, we 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 aren't, we aren't guaranteed any additional payments. So we're we're projecting 180,000. Last year, we received 396,000.
Yeah, Justin, let's not be, let's not confuse, let's not confuse the current fiscal year. With your projection for what we might receive in the future fiscal year. Right? You're what 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 I'm seeing is you're projecting about 150,000. As the future local community stabilization revenue that we would receive. And what and what you're commenting on is in the past, that number has been significantly higher, not that we've been good at predicting what it is. It's just always turned out that way. And you're suspecting that it's likely going to be lower because of some things. Related to the use tax and the COVID environment and that the pool that the state's dealing with the fund is going to be lower. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the guarantee is only for emergency for public safety, not for the full loss. So.
Correct.
So if that's if that's a topic, if that's a topic that we need to come back to and elaborate on. You know, we can go back and and do some research on the. You know, the vote that we took here to vote on that. And, you know, we can get the language out so people understand it a little bit better if we need to. But but I think that the main purpose that you're showing is that on the when we get down to the line item budget. What is that where it says local community stabilization 573 or whatever on the first page? There's a significantly lower revenue projection is what you're saying.
Correct. And sorry, I was I was bringing up my 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 prior year activities. To answer Paul's question. And. To to kind of take a step back, Paul, in in 1819, local community stabilization was 367,000. Alright, so then, you know, so 367. 396 and then so far this year, 180. Is is where we're at.
But you could get more.
Potentially.
Right. Well, I I'm not giving a lot of facts in this or credence in it, but. That question was asked during. The forum on Saturday last, what week ago, Saturday. It was asked to Webster Township's treasurer. And his statement was that they are expecting 600. I think he said 80,000. And then he threw out the number that Dexter could receive close to half a million. I thought it was the same thing you were talking about, maybe not.
Did do different.
Using that with.
Go ahead, Justin. You know the answer to this.
Yeah. So so. What what isn't shown in 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 the budget anywhere is the potential for the city to receive about 465,000. In American Recovery Act fund revenues. And so so so, you know, a lot of folks are referring to that as, you know, the federal stimulus. For for communities. And those funds have have been. Kind of come with a caveat that that there are specific uses that that those funds have to go towards. But as of right now, we're.
Like like what?
Uh, like like water and sewer infrastructure. Community broadband. It was one of the bullet points. Paying. Paying a premium salary to essential employees. Those sorts of things.
So nowhere in here in this budget have we accounted for any of that?
Correct.
How much that would be? How much would that be in a mill? If that number was close to what uses.
Two.
Two. Two mills. Yeah, okay.
But the the problem with that, Paul, is that because the use of it is so restricted. Um, there's very little within the general fund that we could use it for, unless you wanted to provide. I mean, there is some business assistance type of things that they haven't been completely clear on it, but. From our from the city's perspective, it looks like our only real viable use for it is in water and sewer. Water and or sewer at this moment until they provide us with more guidance.
All right, I'll let that go for now. We'll go ahead. But I I know I I can tell you that Webster Township was counting on it. They had the question was specific. And the answer was specific. And then he just threw out the end. It was close to a half a million dollars, which would equal that for. 63, 483, whatever you threw out there. Okay, thank you for your help.
Yeah, Paul, just to just to elaborate a little bit, there's there's guidance on this. There's published. There's published lists on what the prediction is for each community. And Justin's correct on the the 465 or 466, whatever it ends up being. The the bullets, as I understand it, the allowable uses are, and I just tried to send this off to Justin in case you could put it up on the screen. The allowable uses include the following. Response to public health emergency. Or its negative economic impacts. Including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits and affected industries. Or. Premium pay for essential workers. Or. Government services to the extent that revenues are lost. We didn't lose any revenues due to COVID. Or make necessary improvements, investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. And then it says specifically prohibited from using funds for pension contributions. So like the 460, whatever the 466 is, if that's the right number. We cannot use it for a new building purchase. We cannot use it to upgrade our parking lot somewhere. We can't use it to repair the floor of the DPW building that's built in here. We can't use it for a fire station. It's a set that the one that's most likely we could use it for would be like Second Street Water. We we can't pay our pension. We can't pay OPEB. It's 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 a stimulus, but it's very restricted stimulus.
We we also can't use it to offset decreases in intentional decreases in in our own revenue.
Right? Yeah, you can't lower that. You can't lose it. You can't use it to lower your mileage rate. They were specific on that as well. Or to cut taxes is how they said it.
So you're just waiting for that to be finalized in order for it to be shared to us in a packet or?
Right now, right now, Jamie, actually, I just got an email on it today from MML. Um, the state has, there's two ways that they're distributing this money. Some cities like Ann Arbor, Detroit, Grand Rapids are direct recipients of the funding. And then the rest of the cities, it has to be funneled through the state. And there's strings on that too. The state can't charge administration fees. The state has to, you know, has to give it all out. Um, so Treasury just recently set up a department to deal with that for all of us. And hopefully we will have something forthcoming fairly soon from them.
Okay, and that would be shared with us once you have what you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
But I I imagine council will want to have a conversation on on what we want to put those funds towards. They do have to be used by, I think it's 2024.
Yes.
Is is the deadline where we have to expend the funds.
So I guess one, okay, so with the new fire station. You're saying it couldn't be used toward that. Could it be used towards the sewer and water to? Access that?
Improve. Public infrastructure, Paul.
Public infrastructure. All right.
And what water, sewer, broadband, I mean, I mean, it's public infrastructure, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
So the answer is yes, it could be.
Well, I suppose there's probably not 466,000.
Didn't say there was. I just suggested that there could be reduction.
I I don't think it's intended to be building used stuff. You know what I mean? It's not like a lead for one new building.
Got you. Okay. I'm also okay for now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so continuing down, um, so in the current fiscal year, we received $300,000 in. Grant funds that we took in as revenue. From the Washout, Washout Connecting Communities Program. We did receive another grant for Milk Creek Park Phase Two, along with that grant. For 313,000 through the TAP program, but the whereas. The Connecting Communities Program, we accounted for as a revenue, the TAP program. Was basically, we we didn't touch that that funding. It basically came off of the expenses. That were funneled to the state rather than coming to us as revenue and then being sent out as as an expenditure. But in either case, the Connecting Communities Program was a one time grant. And so it is now budgeted for in 2122 or 2223. And then it sounds like from a conversation at at the DDA. That they're looking to make double payments coming up. Towards reimbursing the city for the DTE property swap. And those amounts have have been included in in the upcoming budgets. For a lot of our permit fees, application fees and those sorts of things, a lot of those were are budgeted to to remain steady. Interest earned in investment gain are budgeted to to decrease slightly due to the current financial climate. And we have budgeted that the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee will be doing a online. Paint Dexter this year. And so the the revenues from that are are budgeted to be less than in years past. Does anybody have any question on revenues?
Justin, can you put your screen back up to the other please?
Oh, yeah.
This well.
I forgot I had my.
No, that's.
So you generally started with, you know, what we've had in the past and then with, you know, new information made some adjustments as indicated in the memo.
That's right. Yeah, Jamie, it ends up, it always ends up being, starting from the familiar, which is this year and comparing to next year. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah.
And 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 I also look at 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 least two years prior. To to look at trends and kind of see how things are going in each in each line.
Do we know historically, I mean, how accurate our budget? I mean, are we always meeting our budget? Are we ever, are we always having money left over at the end? Is there any? Do you have information about how well we match it?
The answer is yes to your last part. We always have mine left over.
We 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 budget conservatively. So on the revenue side. We, you know, we 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 always try and look at, you know. What do we really expect things are going to look like? And then, you know, take take one step back and say, okay, what if things go bad? And we 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 do, we do as as best as we can to to be as accurate as we can without going over, if that makes sense.
And can I jump in a second, Justin?
Sure.
One of one of the things across all of our funds, um, we try to do is is ensure, and I actually have a a five year model that I haven't had a chance to update, unfortunately. At this point in time, because I've been digging out from underneath taxes, but, um. Operating our operating revenue should be more than our. operating, our operating revenue should be more than our operating expenses. We never want our expenses to be more than our operating revenue, so that's why you'll see Justin calling out certain things like the excess stabilization payment, we don't rely on that for operating. Um, so we want to make sure grants, we don't rely on them for operations, we want to make sure at the, at the end of the day that we are never negative in, from the operating side, now you'll see us go negative in our, in our revenue to expenditures if we have large capital projects that happen, um, or, you know, some one-time expense that we might be funding from our, from our fund balance for whatever reason. But generally, our operating revenue is always higher than our expense.
Like, like, for example, Mill Creek Park Trail Phase Two, um, you know, that, that was a, a million dollar project. And so we, we, we budgeted to, uh, we, we budgeted that expenses would be greater than revenues, but we know that because it's a million dollar project, that's not, that's not an ongoing every year thing.
And, and what, what, what becomes difficult with a project like that is, and you alluded to it, I think in your memo, is, is sometimes you, you think it's going to start a certain month of the year. And, you know, we're putting together the budget for next year, you know, today. The project might not be occurring until a year from now, so the actual amount of expenditure that you incur, depending on the start date, might vary from your original assumption.
Hmm.
So, so sometimes we're balancing things that span fiscal years.
Right.
That's a common, that's a common thing, I think.
Yeah, like, we, 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 when we were putting together the budget for the current fiscal year, we expected that there would be more expenditures last fiscal year for Phase Two um, than there were, and most of the construction ended up happening this, this fiscal year, and so we, we had to amend the budget to account for an additional, I think it was three hundred thousand, that we thought was going to happen last year, but ended up taking place this, this year.
So is it that you, so is it on both sides that you're conservative, you underestimate revenue and overestimate expenditures slightly? You, like, you take a worst-case scenario on, on both regards, or one or the other, or it depends?
Not, 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 not necessarily worst-case scenario, but, but we, we, yes, we, we, we slightly underestimate revenue and slightly overestimate expense. Um, so that way, if, if something does come up, then it's, it's not a bank breaker, you know, or.
Okay, I mean, you, you'll find in most operating departments that at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be in the ninety-five to a hundred percent range of use of the budget. Um, you'll have a few that might be less because maybe a project wasn't done, or, you know, something, something meant that something couldn't happen, but in general, we're, we're right in that, like, ninety-five to a hundred percent usage range.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any additional questions on, on revenues? All right, so, um, moving over to expenditures. Um, starting at the top with city council. Um, we, we expect that the city council budget will remain relatively flat, um, we have provided funds for additional training. Um, we, uh, have also provided funds in the event that, um, new members of council, um, are interested in um, electronic devices to be able to, um, access their electronic agenda packets. Um, other than, so, so you really actually have, have two bu- two potential budgets in front of you. Um, the first assumes that there is no change with regards to, to facilities. And the second um, is what things could or would look like if we were to purchase thirty-five fifteen broad. Um, in the first budget in your packet, um, in the city council, uh, department, um, we assume that we would go back to in-person meetings starting in, uh, January of twenty-two. And so there are um, funds accounted for to rent facilities, or, or to continue to, to rent facilities. Um, that is removed in the second budget, where if we were to purchase thirty-five fifteen, um, we would no longer have, have those expenditures. Um, and there's a couple of locations in, in, in the budget where, where there are differences, um, between Budget One and Budget Two, um, to account for, for things like that. Um, and I, I will try and point, point those out as, as we go through. But, um, for the most part, I'm, 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 as I'm walking you through this, I'm looking at pages six through uh, sixteen of the packet.
Um, the horizontal presentation.
The, the horizontal presentation, correct. And so, and, and again, if anybody has any, any questions, please feel free to, to stop me and, you know, flag me down, ask me questions. Um, in the city manager department, um, just because of uncertainty with what's, you know, going to be decided with regard to the manager position and assistant manager position. Um, we've estimated those, uh, expenditures ho- on the high side. Um, and then once, once a decision is made, you know, that will get narrowed and, and focused. Um, we do an, an OPEB actuarial study, uh, every other year. Um, and so in, in finance, under professional services, um, every other year, uh, you'll see kind of a spike in, in expenses to account for, um, that OPEB actuarial. Which is anywhere between three and, and four thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna have, so, you know, just continuing down, um, if, if I don't mention it, it means that there, there aren't significant changes in, in line items. Um, we have seen attorneys' fees be generally higher than, than what we've included in, in the original budget, so um, the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three have been budgeted higher um, to account for, for what we've actually seen. Um.
So Justin, can I, can I just interrupt real quick for a second?
Sure.
And that, eh, um, Jamie and Wa, is it, is it clear to you when you look at pages like six and seven? And such, you know, when, when he refers to the city manager portion of the budget, he's on the top of page, the bottom of page six and the top of page seven, on the line item budget. For example, under, under the first line item where there's a lot of numbers and it says salaries non-union.
Hmm.
And then the, the blue, the blue are the notes related to that line item, the first note, the twenty-one, twenty-two is related to the projected column on the right, that's for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. And the other note would be for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, any assumptions that are made. So in this case, under this portion of the budget, a hundred percent of the city manager salary and a hundred percent of the assistant city manager are in the line item that projects, that he's projecting at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Everybody see that?
Yep.
And then as you scroll down, there's a ten thousand dollar allowance for a management intern.
Hmm.
Right.
And then you get to salaries and there's some union. So, so it, you'll notice it's like, there's a hundred percent of a UB clerk, that's a utility billing clerk. And, and in that next line, that same line item, seventy-five percent of the admin assistant. Which means somewhere else in the budget, there's a line item that has the other twenty-five percent, maybe in whole or in part of the admin assistant.
Yeah, and I believe that's under community development for planning.
So the, the, the people, the people, our staff are split out. And those notes are used to, to show you how they're, how they fit into the different sections of the budget.
Right, and, and, and really the, the, the most complicated of that is, um, our DPW employees. Um, which are accounted for in, uh, public works, downtown public works, and parks.
And three other funds.
And three other funds. But, um, all, all of the, the general fund portion of, of, of their salaries are accounted for under, um, public works, downtown public works, and parks.
And can I say something just real quick too? Um, just for Jamie and Wa who may not be familiar, back in, in the revenue side, you will see, um, enterprise admin fees and Act fifty-one admin fees and DDA admin fees. That is basically myself, um, city manager, assistant, assistant city manager, um, our time to do their budgeting, to do their books, to do their payroll, to do, you know, those type of administrative services that we would do for them instead of splitting our salaries out across all of them as well. And we actually base that on actuals.
So those other funds pay the general fund for the administrative assistance to help operate those funds?
Correct, yep.
Yep. Is there a reason for the higher, um, recommended vacation sick time cash out on page seven?
Page what, Jamie?
Page seven.
Yeah, uh, one oh one, one seven two, seven one two. Um, so we, we have a potential retirement in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay.
And, um, along with that retirement would come a payout of, um, unused, um, vacation sick time.
Gotcha.
So let me, let me ask this question, not that I'm, uh, looking for a raise, but it's got twenty-four meetings times eighty dollars a meeting. Mayor doesn't get any more than we do.
Does.
He does.
Oh, he does?
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay, well, good, he should, he works harder. Um, so the, the question, the question I have is how does that compare in two ways? With other units of government in Washington County, I just want to pick Washington County. What do council members get? Uh, you know, other units of government, and do they get paid for other meetings like planning committee meetings? So forth and so on that they are assigned to or that they volunteer for to participate in? And if you don't have the answer, I, I don't have a problem with that, can we get the answer to that?
We, we sure can, um, I, I want to say I did a spreadsheet on that a couple of years ago. Um, but I, I don't think anything came of it, um, but we, we, we can certainly get, get that answer for you.
But it'd be interesting, it's not that any of us work for the money, but, uh, you know, for the rewards that, uh, that you get through these meetings, we should be able to, uh, at least compare to some, some category of equality. So it's just a, a thought, I, I think that what I've heard and what I've observed is that it's lower than most units of government, and it hasn't had a raise in how many years?
Not since I've been here, Paul.
What year was that, Mary?
Two thousand and one.
Thank you, so twenty years, you don't get a raise. Um, we need a better union.
I, I can tell you that Celine City Council just increased theirs, um, and there's an article in the Sun Times February of this year. They only report what the annual change was, but if you divide it out by twenty-four meetings, assuming it's the same thing. Their city council is making one forty a meeting, and the mayor is making two twelve, uh, two twelve fifty. Um, so I can share that article with Justin.
Sure, appreciate that.
So that sounds like I'm overpaid.
I mean, there's a difference, I mean, there's a difference there in relative, the relative difference between council and mayor is less in Celine than it is here.
Right, right.
Sean, the mayor of Celine doesn't go out and shovel snow in a parking lot, and he doesn't wrap trees either. So he deserves it.
Thanks, pal. You know, I don't care anything about it, take it away.
I know that, but somebody may someday, and somebody's, oh, you're great.
It's a fair question.
Thank you.
It's a fair question.
We can, we can definitely come back with, uh, with that comparison for you. Um, if, if there any other questions, we can keep going. Um, we are looking at, moving on to, um, elections. Um, we are looking at, uh, elections in August of twenty-two uh, and November of twenty-two. So there are some funds budgeted in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, which is actually, um, this, this coming fiscal year, uh, July one of twenty-one to, uh, June thirty of twenty-two, which is before the elections. Uh, but we have money budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year to kind of prep for those elections, because there's activities that we have to do like, um, uh, election commission meetings, publications, um, those sorts of things in advance of the actual elections. Um, but then obviously there's funds included in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget to actually hold those elections. Um, and that's, that's one of those other areas where there's a little bit of a difference between the two budgets that have been presented. Um, because if we have thirty-five fifteen, then we don't necessarily need to rent out um, another facility, uh, to serve as, uh, as a polling location.
Any reason to budget the worst-case scenario of, of facilities in Milage? Which it seems like we've talked around, but we have, I mean, we've obviously not made a decision on, but in terms of fire, fire station conversations, I mean, I don't know what the difference would be if we anticipated an election this next year, um, what is that, what would that satisfy us back?
Um, I, I, I would say it would be eight to ten thousand to hold a special election.
Eight to ten thousand for a special election, okay.
But it was with the general election, that was with the county or the state, it wouldn't do that, right?
Um, so, so typically the, the way it works is, um, if, if we have an item on that election, then, then we're paying for it. If, if, if we're doing an election for someone else and not ourselves, then they're paying for it. Unless, unless it's a regular August or a regular November, uh, even year collection. In which case we're, we're paying for it. Does that make sense?
I, I, I guess my question is that, oh, just assume by, um, some miracle that we put a ballot issue on for the fire hall in, in, uh, uh, in November. Is there a general election in November?
Uh, there is not, eh, at, at least not, not, not that I'm aware of. It would be, it would be our, our special election.
And the same thing with August or May of the next year?
Correct.
So when is the next? Oh, it depends on what the.
Yeah, the, the.
County does as well, though, right?
Yeah, so, so the, the, the county could call a, a special election.
Or the school.
Or the school. But generally, if we haven't, if, if we put an item on that ballot, then.
Around ten thousand dollars.
So whether we're on it alone or with somebody else, if it's not the November of an even year, you pay eight to ten.
Correct. Well, and, and, and for, for, for regular elections, for, for a regular August and November of even years, um, we're, 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 we're paying for those.
Okay.
It's just we, it's just we know there's going to be those elections in the even years.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, so, um.
So wait, let me just, let me just say this as a, as a, um,
I don't want to say, not a closure statement, but so what's the phrase I want to use? Budgets, budgets are meant to be a tool. Okay, we we use them to plan. Okay, they are flexible and could be changed. It's like having a tool belt and having a hammer and a screwdriver with a Phillips head and a regular head. Sometimes it's okay to have it in the belt. You may not even pull it out. So I mean, I mean, if we're not making decisions today, we can, we're providing input and ideas, which I like. You know, if if instead of staring at that white spot on the paper there under the 2021, 2022 recommended budget and wondering, does that prevent us from having an election on the fire station? If we want to, let's get through this a little bit. If we want to be proactive and put a number there, we can do that. It just means we're going to, you know, we're going to pay to do it. We're absorbing that cost going in. If if we didn't put a number there and a decision was made to to put it on the ballot, we would just have to amend the budget at some point before the fiscal year ends in which that occurs. So we have complete flexibility is all I want to point out to everybody that 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 if 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 that's, if that's an area that you want to be proactive and say, we intend to do this. Whether whether it's this year or next, but we want to show the intent. We can put a number there as long as it, you know, Justin can balance it or that where we can balance it, you know, because we want to show that revenues exceed expenditures, right? But I'm, I'm, I guess I hope I'm being helpful in saying that. I don't want people to think that we can't put a number there just because there isn't a regular election. We can do it either way. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I agree. I agree with this.
Yeah.
Okay, so so maybe there's more discussion on that, you know, when Zach's here at another meeting or whatever, but we have that flexibility, and if it doesn't get used, it's not like you're spending it. It's just, it just returns itself back to the reserves. If we want a whole fiscal year without using it. But I think it's important. I think what you're showing, what you're saying is that there's no planned elections. See, that's why there's no number there.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
But but there there are other election activities that we that we do do every single year, which includes, you know, voter registration, sending out voter ID cards, master cards, you know, those sort of administrative activities that are elections related that are not holding elections.
Oh, yeah. And that's the reason for the other $6,900 in that.
Exactly, yeah. So you'll you'll always see a number in in the elections department, even if there isn't an election that year. So if if we're okay there, you'll notice under buildings and grounds, under equipment, there's notes for terminal server replacement and office computer replacement. We have a an ongoing schedule of computer and technology replacements. We work with our IT vendor on that. So we we actually have have two servers, and one of those servers is is coming up for replacement. I believe we initially installed it in 2014. And it's, I don't want to say it's a secondary server, but it's a server that allows remote access for our water and wastewater employees to be able to access things like payroll and and some of our technology functions. And you know, servers are are typically more money than than regular computers, so that's why there's a a larger number in 2122. But you will see that occasionally throughout the other departments, including the the managers department and the treasurer's department. Because there are, we have a technology replacement schedule, and that's, that's the implementation of of the technology replacement schedule. Moving down a little bit to the City Tree Program. We are
Before well, the the community garden was at a variety of numbers and also they dropped from 5,000 to 1,500. Can you give me a reason?
Yeah, so so the community garden actually is is not very expensive to operate when it is established. So the the 6,500 in the original budget and amended budget for the current year and the 5,000 for the projected activity for the current year is basically reestablishing and rebuilding the community garden in its new location. Once the community garden is rebuilt and reestablished, it isn't, it isn't very expensive to to run and operate. It's only about $1,500 a year.
So this is for a rebuild? Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Jamie?
Yeah, thanks. There's a note about in software on the bottom of page nine, 265803. Google post revised DNS doc of IT right survey software. What is the survey software?
Yeah, so based on on council conversation during the the goal setting work sessions, I did set aside a couple of thousand for, to allow us access to survey software if that's something that we want to to do in the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, so TBD, but earmarked.
It's 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 a placeholder, correct?
Thank you. It's good to hear.
See, there's where the goal setting ties into the budget.
Thank you.
I say that jokingly, but that that's, that's the kind of thing, that's a really good example of, you know, a lot of discussion, a lot of, a lot of ideas shared, and then hopefully find an implementation area, right? You can see it. Now, we we got some more work. We'd have to select which one and evaluate and determine an ultimate cost, but at least it shows intent potentially there, right?
Right, right. Thank you.
Sure.
And so so in Department 285, City Tree Program, one thing that that we are looking to do going forward is establish an annual tree maintenance schedule where our tree contractor will visit an area of the city each winter. And so we've provided additional funds in the City Tree Program to begin that that implementation, that that annual rotation. And you'll see I I included in the supplemental documentation a map of what those different sections could look like. And the idea is that we would tackle one section a year in the winter. And that's why there's a significant increase in in the City Tree Program budget.
Given the merge between Treeboard and Parks and Rec, and my guess is these could, it doesn't mean anything about the budget. Is there any reason that the budgets have to come under the same name, or it's fine for them to stay separate?
It's 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 fine for them to stay separate. It's actually nice to have it, have the City Tree Program called called out separately because there is, there is a tree fund that accounts for revenues that we received a number of years ago that we we will take from that City Tree Fund to help fund the resident cost share program, which the the expenditures of the of the cost share program live in the City Tree Program under that 285731 001 line.
Okay.
So Justin, some of us live in the older part of the village that has the large trees. It doesn't preclude that if a tree has an issue on your property that this would take over that, they would still deal with that as they have in the past and try to take down
Yeah, so 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 the 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 additional funds in in that department would go towards the the annual program. But the, you know, we've set aside about $12,000 each year for for spot treatment, and we would continue to do that spot treatment.
Okay, thank you.
So under law enforcement, our contract with the Washington County Sheriff's Office is coming up for renewal here in the next couple of years. The last year of the contract is 2022. We know that the cost of a police service unit will increase by about a percent and a half in the upcoming fiscal year. And then an additional 2% has been estimated for 2223. And once we have a chance to to meet with the Washington County Sheriff's Office and and work through that, I don't know how much negotiation there is, but the negotiation process with the Washington County Sheriff's Office and know what those fiscal years going out look like for the cost of a police service unit, we'll be able to to kind of hone in on that that number for the 2223 fiscal year and going out. A copy of the the current contract has been provided in the packet, and you can see that that contract covered a number of of years going back to 2012. I I believe that we did a contract renewal in 2018 is the last time. And so we're we're coming to for a for a contract renewal soon.
Much bigger question than we have time for now, but I guess I'm just generally curious about municipalities who have, you know, provide their own police protection and municipalities who don't. So we know Chelsea has their own PD and Arbor has their own PD. I don't think I know of like Celine. I don't know if they do. I'm just, I don't know when the last time we had our own. I I know there was a time when we did. Is that ever a conversation that's revisited? Like, I don't, I don't know what the cost benefit is. I just, I don't know much about it. So I don't know if there's like a couple minute brief intro you could give to that general topic.
Yeah, so we, the the city did have its own police department a a number of years ago. It was before me, so maybe somebody else can can speak to that better than I can.
Long, 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 long ago.
Very long ago, okay.
Way back. We we looked at it when Donna was the manager, so we looked at that and and it just wasn't cost effective, really. By the time you factor in all of the equipment and the shifts that you have to have in there and, you know, the, it just wasn't cost effective as as compared to the sheriff.
Because right, right now, we we work with Dexter Township and Webster Township. And each of us pays for a certain number of of PSEs, which is a police service unit. And together, we're able to to kind of go in and and have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage. Whereas if we were to have our own department, we, I think the expectation would be that we would provide 24/7 coverage. And that that gets expensive very quickly. Because, you know, for for every, for every, you know, you basically have to have have three officers in order to be able to provide, you know, one 24-hour coverage cycle. But then you also have to be able to provide them days off, and so you so you need more people to to be able to do that.
As I recall, the training part of it was just exorbitant when we looked at it.
Yeah, there's, there's training, equipment, cars. There's, there, there's a lot that goes into it.
Justin, why, why is the projected activity for the current fiscal year, 2021?
Why is that so low?
Yeah.
So the Washington County Sheriff's Office was the beneficiary of federal funds. And so they they were able to to pass that, that essentially grant savings on to the municipalities that they serve.
Gotcha. That might be a good note to add somewhere.
Are you talking like the 500 down to 463?
Yeah. So so that happened at DAFD too. DAFD was able to submit for some essentially COVID emergency personnel cost replacement. So what you're saying is the county was able to do that for police, and they've passed some of that along to us.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And and speaking of DAFD, we we were also the beneficiary of a lower percentage of runs this year. And so our portion of the total cost of the DAFD budget was lower this year than in last year, and last year's was lower than the year before. So we we've made, as as of today, we've made two payments in the current calendar year to DAFD. And we have two more payments this calendar year of the same amount. We don't know next year, next calendar year's amount yet. But we have it budgeted to increase by 5%. Again, because we we budget conservatively and we don't know exactly what that amount is yet, but if we were to have more runs and and a greater share of the DAFD budget next year, then that number could could swing against us where it's swayed in our favor the last two years.
Justin, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that as we get closer to June, that I, that you have the latest runs for 2021. So you can kind of see where that percentage is starting off at least trending. Just in, just in case, if if, you know, if we're way ahead in runs or something, we may want to rethink the the 5% increase. Sure, I mean, where whereas if things stay the way they've been the last two years, your assumption is probably fine.
Okay. The the budget does also continue to provide funding for the zoning ordinance update. And the activities in the planning department budget that are ongoing. We always have some some level of of work with Carlisle Workman that we do. But on top of that, we've been working with them to a much greater extent because of the zoning ordinance update this current fiscal year and continuing into next fiscal year.
How many planning commissioners are there?
Nine. And and across most of the departments in the general fund, we have budgeted to to keep the cost of of publications, of the required publications similar. When, as you know, we we just went back to the Sun Times, when we were with the Ann Arbor News, our costs were were pretty exorbitant. And I I anticipate that those will go down a little bit. That was one of the benefits of going back to Sun Times, but until we know, until we have, you know, a good fiscal year of of kind of how those look, we have those budgeted to remain high. For per hour contract with the union, salaries are for union staff are proposed at a 3% increase plus their contracted stepping leases. I've also shown in the budget, 3% increases for non-union staff minus part-time staff. We do also have budgeted for a part-time farmers market manager, which we just did an interview yesterday. That went well. So hopefully we will have a new farmers market manager on board here shortly. Um, which we just did uh an inter- interview yesterday. That went well. So hopefully we will have a new farmers market manager on board here shortly. Um, and then we also have budgeted for a um planer coordinator, um an assessing field worker and crossing guards. Um, some of you may not know, but we, we brought uh the crossing guards in-house, I want to say, two years ago. Um, and they've been doing a great job. Particularly, particularly, uh one of our crossing guards, Brenda, has really um kind of stepped up and um has helped us coordinate uh the hours that that school is open. And uh what days, um, you know, they're part-time and what days, you know, they, they're on spring break, for example. Um, and so, you know, she's been doing a great, great job. Um, our assessing field worker, Ming Chen. Um, our, our assessing field worker, Ming Chen, has been doing a great job. Um, and uh the planer coordinator, because we're anticipating a um online planer festival this year. Um, I've reduced the, the estimated number of hours that we're going to need her. Um, but um, I'm also budgeting that we'll go to, go back to an in-person planer festival in twenty-twenty-two. And so that number of hours goes back up in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Two quick questions about that. So crossing guards, I guess it's surprising to me that's not something the schools manage. Is that just because it's public streets?
Um, so it, it's actually in state law that um the city is responsible for um the provision of crossing guards if, if there are going to be crossing guards.
Okay, that's helpful.
Um, so the, the, the schools were basically managing the crossing guard program. Um, but they had, they had um some rules internally about what they needed to be paid. And so basically the schools would send us a bill. Um, and we would pay, you know, whatever the schools were, were expecting us to, to pay the crossing guards. So by, by bringing those, by us hiring our own crossing guards, we actually saved quite a bit of money um in that, in that program.
That's helpful. Um, and then for the planning coordinator, so that's somebody beyond who's on the committee or or who's on arts, culture and heritage and they would be like working remotely or out of the office, or they're like working on behalf of the city then or something?
Correct, yep. So, so um our planner coordinator has worked remotely. Um, and um it, it is somewhat in- independent of the committee. Um, but they're, they're a, a part-time seasonal member of staff.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, and I, I, I imagine I, I have an idea of what, what I might want to say.
Yeah, I just want to speak to that briefly. Um, Jamie, I don't know how much you know about the history of that event, but you know, we, as all the volunteers on arts, culture and heritage, we worked really hard to grow that event for five or six years. It grew exponentially. It turned into something that the community uh gave us a lot of good feedback on. We um spent a lot of time discussing, you know, what the purpose of it was. Was it a community event or was it a fundraiser? We decided it was a community event, but we also decided that it took ninety-five percent of the committee's time. And if we didn't hire that coordinator, um which City Council did approve, um after we brought the idea to council. Um, if we didn't hire that, the committee wouldn't be able to do things like the bicentennial. Um, there just wasn't time.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, for, for pretty much every meeting from January through September was wholly dedicated to the Planer Festival. Spending two and a half to three hours every meeting, working on, on planning it. So um by bringing a, a member of staff um specifically dedicated to focus on plan air, um the goal is to, to free up the Arts Culture Heritage Committee's time without putting too much of a burden on um existing full-time staff to, to manage the event.
Okay, Justin.
Well, it's difficult. I mean, you know, just my limited experience on Parks and Rec when you're only meeting once a month. I mean, even City Council.
We were meeting, I mean, we were meeting between meetings. We were, it, it was a lot. We were meeting in subgroups like probably twice a month i- in addition to the meeting um in certain months of the year. I mean, it was, it was a, it, it is a lot of work when it's not a virtual event.
Thanks, I'm good on those two questions. Thank you.
Great. So um, we're, we're anticipating that um uh healthcare will, will remain relatively flat. Um, possibly a, a small increase. Um, we already talked a little bit about software, but um we have budgeted to uh continue Zoom meetings. Um, so we've budgeted to um, continue our, our access to, to Zoom um through both upcoming fiscal years. One of the, the bigger changes is um in our MERS DB payment. Um, so we're, you know, getting, getting towards the end of the budget, page fifteen. Um, MERS changed their assumptions. Um, and so that, you know, that they're, they're, they started, they've, their assumption changes included um uh a lower rate of return on investments and employees living longer, basically. And so that has resulted in um them providing us with a greater um employer contribution towards the defined benefit program. Um, the, the minimum required payment has gone, is anticipated to go up. Um, and so I, I provided a, a spreadsheet and um uh a chart or graph in um in the packet, uh kind of outlining how those um payments uh are likely to change. And so I've included in the budget um increasing those payments for the divine benefit program um in the two upcoming fiscal years to, to match kind of what, what the chart or graph um is, is showing. But there is, there is hope on the horizon though. Um, because after a few years of, of um increasing payments, um it does drop off significantly or is projected to drop off significantly in the twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine fiscal year.
And can I jump in here for a second?
Sure.
Um, first, let me apologize. I thought I had muted myself when I called my dog. I have a, in addition to my very old cat, I have a geriatric German Shepherd who is literally on steroids right now and really needed to go outside. Um, that's the way it works. So on the MERS, we knew that um when we closed the uh defined benefit plan to new employees all those years ago, we knew that eventually we would see higher um required payments. And so some of what Justin is talking about there is just because we're at the end of our kind of closed period to fund, that's also why you're seeing, it's not just the uh assumption changes. It's also that we're just, we're at the end of our period to become fully funded. So it, this is not, this is not anything that's unexpected by, by um, from a planning perspective.
Do they have any questions on that?
How many units of government? Our size are fully funded. Or how, how many are fully funded? State, do we know that?
No, we could probably look it up though, because there's a, um, I don't know if you remember, they passed that law requiring a certain amount of funding for OPEB and pensions, so that, those statistics are probably on the Treasury website somewhere. Want me to look at, look it up?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to you. I mean, it's not a bad thing what we're doing. I'm just curious.
If, if, if I, if I had to take a wild guess, I would say probably very few.
Right.
Okay, I have that for next time.
Thanks, man. It's not a big deal by this, it's interesting.
Justin, that's good work on the on that chart, those charts there on the table. You know, I, we've been behind the curve in that area for a long time, but um what's our percentage eighty-five, I think, or something through the last valuation?
Correct, eighty, eighty-five with the supplemental, which is, which is what they call the, the overpayments that we've been making.
The surplus, the surplus divisions.
Yeah, okay, well, so we, we've basically got another ten years of staying the course and then we can see how many projections they change or assumptions they change where we're at. But I, we still have a, we still have a gap of like I don't know, five hundred thousand or something, that, that, that eighty-five percent we're still, I don't know, five hundred thousand away from being fully funded.
Right. Well, and, and you, you can see on the, on their graph um, what, what, what their assumptions are um as far as when we'll hit that one hundred percent. That graph on page uh thirty-eight.
Yeah.
And, and, and what, what we're really looking at is the, the dotted blue line, which is the, their change in assumptions, but allowing for, for the surplus.
So they're saying in twenty-twenty-five, we're going to be a hundred percent.
That's, that's
Or maybe that's twenty-twenty-six, I can't.
Twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six is, is what they're, they're claiming.
So we'll stay the course for five years and see how well we're doing.
And then uh the, the computed annual employer contribution graph is, is what I use to come up with the numbers um in that, in that spreadsheet. So on, on page three of the, the memo, um, there's a, a listing of, of some of the, the smaller and, and, and um not so small um projects that um are new uh from this year uh from last year. Um, which includes um doing, performing maintenance on the, the DPW building's concrete floor. Um, a hundred thousand for new playground equipment in Mill Creek Park. Um, a new two-sided kiosk sign um at, at the Grand Street and Broad Street entrance to the, the trail. Continuing with uh to, to fix the in-ground lighting downtown. Um, purchasing wraps for the holiday display. Um, the survey software um and continuing to implement the, the software replacement schedule.
Hey, can I back up to the defined benefit? Thing for just a second?
What page?
Well, it's not so much the page.
Oh, it's, that, that, okay.
It, it's, I mean, if, if you want the page, it's, it's page fifteen. I'm on page fifteen of the line item budget. Where, where we're showing the deep defined benefit plan under insurance and bonds.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Um, and you can see that number increasing a little bit. I just want to make sure, I, I say some version of this every year, I think, but th- this is really a partnership between city council and the residents and the, and the pledges that we've made over the years to our employees. Um, that promise for the defined benefit plan was something that we did not, as a community, fund very well in the uh eighties, nineties and early two thousands up to about two thousand and eight, nine, ten area. And um you know, we, we, we are one of, we are one of the communities that did not have to lay off any employees. I don't know what that stat is. But I can tell you, we're one of them that didn't have to do it, and the, the employees helped us in this, in this um in this game, if you will, that's saving for, you know, the, the pension benefits. They agreed to take a lower multiplier as part of one of the union negotiations back in two thousand and eleven. Uh, they bridged, it's called bridging down for the they didn't bridge the stuff up to two thousand and eleven, but the stuff from two thousand and eleven forward has been bridged down to a lower multiplier. I think it went from two point two-five down to two, if I remember correctly.
Sounds right.
It's either that or it's two and a half down to two, five.
I think it's two, two and a half to two point two-five.
Okay, that's what it is. It was down a quarter point, but that, that quarter point made all the difference in the world, coupled with our increased payments and um, so the commitment, I just wanted to say this, that the commitment has been on both sides to, to make sure that we have the employees that can provide the services as well as we're taking care of the, the promises that we made years and years and years ago when we set this up. Now, we changed that for new employees. We've got our new employees on a defined contribution plan, and there's payments that the employees make. It's a different program. Anyway, I just wanted to, to, to comment that it's, you know, the, the, the staff has helped us out. It's important that we make sure we keep that percentage going towards a hundred, because for many years, we, we ignored it, is kind of my perception. And uh we haven't lost our focus in ten years on this or more, and um it's a really important line item. As well as that, as well as that other post-employment benefits, we didn't really talk about that one, but the, that's what pays for their not their pension benefits, but their healthcare benefits that they have. And we've, we've made tremendous progress there. You'll see on the quarterly reports that Marie provides us when she puts out the, the fund balance. I think we've saved, what is it, two, two million dollars, Marie?
Yeah, I think it's two point one now.
Okay. Well, that was, that was zero in two thousand and eight. Was zero, and um so that's another tremendous thing that we have to keep going on, so that, anyway, tho- those two payments, the ninety-seven, two and the ninety thousand are, are very important towards our unfunded liabilities. So commitments we made long ago and need to keep. Sorry if that sounds like a soapbox, but I just wanted to provide a little history.
It was good. Cause we did it. Other units of government had not.
Right, I'm proud of that. I, that's a very, I'm, I'm proud we didn't lose any employees through, through all that stuff, so. Go ahead, Justin. Sorry to go, take away from the other items.
No, um, I, the, the, you know, I've, I've already talked about it a little bit, but kind of the last thing is, um, you know, the like, as I said, there's two budgets in your packet. Um, one is kind of without thirty-five, fifteen broad, and one is with thirty-five, fifteen broad. Um, in the second budget, I've highlighted, um, li- li- literally highlighted in yellow um, a lot of, or a, all of the um line items that uh would be proposed to, to change um in the event of, of the purchase of, of thirty-five, fifteen broad. I, I don't know if anybody has any, any questions on that or any of those line items or uh the differences.
So just, just kind of, just kind of scroll through them, Justin. Just start on page uh, you know, seventeen, the purchase doesn't affect the revenues.
Correct.
Right, so it doesn't affect, I'll let you take over, doesn't affect the revenue, so that, those numbers are largely the same, and then you go down on the bottom of page eighteen is the first budget light on that, that would change.
Yeah, um, it, it would impact um what we do and do not have to, have to rent. Um, specifically, we wouldn't have to rent council chambers. Uh, we wouldn't have to rent um a, a location for um, really, we wouldn't have to rent one of the two locations at least um for our uh elections program. Um, in uh professional services under two-six-two, that's, that's where um we account for not needing to rent, like with the senior center. In, uh, professional services under two-six-two, that's, that's where, um, we account for not needing to rent, likely the senior center for the elections program. The increased cost of utilities, uh, for thirty-five fifteen broad. Would fall under, um, buildings and grounds in department two-six-five. Uh, under two-six-five-nine-two-zero. I've, I've projected an additional thirteen thousand, um, we, we are paying utilities. Here and, and for our other buildings. But, uh. That, that, that increase does account for, for, um, proposed increase to utilities. There's additional funding, uh, in twenty-two, twenty-three proposed. As kind of a placeholder for, um, a, a large capital project. Or, um, additional furnishings. We're actually meeting with partners and architecture on Friday to review, um, their findings. Um, from their building inspection. Um, and so we, I, I don't have those numbers yet or, or. A, a listing of all of the items that, that may or, or may not need to be addressed. But we, we should hopefully have those here pretty quick. But a line item of, of a hundred thousand, um, accounts for potentially a, a special project, um, for thirty-five fifteen. Because it's also a larger building, there would be additional cleaning costs, which is accounted for, um, in the next line item. And we have equipment service contracts for, um, the DPW and, and wastewater treatment plant. And I would imagine that we would also want, um, service contracts for the, the mechanical. Components at thirty-five fifteen as well. In, uh, two-six-five-nine-four-three-zero-zero-one, um, we also wouldn't need to rent office space. Um, and so those numbers have been removed. And then we jump to, uh, page twenty-eight. Um, capital improvements. And so this kind of gets into how we see. The bond playing out. So we have our due diligence services, which are covered under capital improvements, uh, one oh-one-nine-zero-one-nine-seven-five. And we anticipate that the due diligence services are gonna, gonna cost about forty thousand dollars and that doesn't include the cost of. Bond issuance with Baker Tilling. Um, that would include, that would, that would include. All of the work by partners and architecture, um, the. Survey work, the, um. Uh, assessing work, the, um, field services, environmental work. But.
And we'll need to make a budget amendment for those at some point?
We will.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
But the, the way, you know, I, I, Marie and I have talked and, and the way we kind of see this playing out is. You know, if, if city council wanted to put, um, money towards the purchase. You know, let's, let's use three hundred thousand as, as kind of a placeholder. So we, we bond for two and a half million. We put one, one point seven million of that bond towards the purchase price. And then the city puts about three hundred thousand in towards the purchase price. That leaves us with just under eight hundred thousand dollars. In bond proceeds. So what we would likely do is take the bond proceeds. And a, a transfer from the general fund. And take all of that and put it into a special projects capital improvement fund. And from that fund, we'd pay the two million towards the purchase. Leaving us with eight hundred thousand dollars in that special projects fund. And then it would be from that special projects fund that we would do any other capital improvements. That we would need to do for thirty-five fifteen, which could include the elevator. Relocating the stairs, creating a. Vestibule and or, um. Front, front counter circulation space. And a- any other, any other, you know. I- immediate need capital improvements that would have to happen to thirty-five fifteen for us to be able to, to move in. Um, that could also include furnishings. Uh, again, we, we, we don't have that, that full list yet of, of what all will need to be done to the building, but. We think that, that eight hundred thousand will, will. Cover most, if not all of it. But that's also why I've provided a hundred thousand dollars in the, um, buildings and grounds. In twenty-two, twenty-three is in case it, it doesn't cover all of it and we, we need to do an additional project.
So, am I right in understanding that? The potential total cost of thirty-five fifteen broad. All said and done is two point eight million dollars?
Potentially.
Spending almost fifty percent. In, of the purchase price and capital improvements?
Put, potentially, yeah, so i- if, if, if the city were to want to contribute towards the purchase price. That could offset. Some of the bond proceeds and then the bond proceeds could be put towards improvements and furnishings.
But it'll all be sent, I mean, it's all city money, it's all being spent on the same project.
Correct.
What, Jamie, what did you say about fifty percent? I didn't follow that.
So, that if the total cost is gonna end up being two point eight million dollars and, but the actual purchase price is closer to the two million dollars, then. You're almost spending another million dollars, so another fifty percent. To, is that right?
You're spending an extra, yeah, you're spending an extra eight hundred thousand, right?
Less than fifty percent, but I mean. Nearly, if that doesn't cover everything, so, so.
So, Justin, that last. Bit that you were, were saying there. Can you give this, give us to us that in a summary? And how that would be done? Because following along here and. Saying this is going here and this would be paid for this, it's a little more difficult than. If I'm talking to Joe Smith on the street. Explaining to him, if I'd have something in dialogue that I could explain. What we're doing and how we're paying for it and all the above. Or anybody else that was interested in finding out. Any other citizens, you know, find out there. A, a summary would be great to have for us to talk about.
Sure, so, uh, summary is, uh. And, and, you know, this, this is subject to, to discussion and, and change. Uh, but what's, what's shown on these pages is, um. Three hundred thousand dollars upfront. And then, uh, forty thousand. In. Fund payments in twenty-one, twenty-two. And eighty thousand in bond payments in twenty-two, twenty-three.
So it's, it's ba- Paul, it, um, well, let me ask Justin, Justin, this is the. This is the scenario. Where. Where, where we're financing the, the, the repayment of the two point five million in bonds over twenty years, right?
Correct.
So, so what we're seeing in this budget would, the, the twenty, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, and then the far right column. Twenty-two, twenty-three. That would be year one and year two of the twenty-year payback.
Correct. And, and the way that the, the bonds would likely be structured. Is that. When the two thousand and six bond comes off. The new, the, the thirty-five fifteen bond would increase. And so our bond payments would stay roughly, roughly the same once we get to about. I think it's twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. But our, our, our bond payments would, would remain roughly flat. Compared to, to what you see in twenty-two, twenty-three.
As, as we work towards next week. I think there's a way we can show that, Justin, maybe we can, we can provide a little bit additional detail that shows. Again, all this is an introduction and ideas, you know, we could, we could choose to, to try and pay the bonds off. In a ten-year scenario too, and it would change, it would just mean that those numbers were bigger. So this, you know, this is a discretionary point for council to consider and discuss, but Justin, maybe you could show the. The comparison of a couple of options there of how, what, 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 how it would, would affect, you know, the, the two years of budget we're looking at if we did a different. Scenario also.
I can do that.
The assumption is that we're bonding, would it be, makes sense to put the cost of those services in the budget? It sounded like we don't have, what did you say, Baker Tilly, I don't know.
Uh, so, so, so the, those, those are accounted for. But those are accounted for on page twenty-nine. Under estimated appropriations, bond issuance costs.
Got it. Thank you.
For twenty thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And that twenty thousand nine hundred is the same number that we saw in the packet previous that we didn't approve at that time.
You, you, you approved it, uh, if.
Sub- subject issuing them.
So, subject issuing, correct, yeah. And so, so those would, would be paid out from the bond proceeds.
And they don't have to be, but that's just how it's set up, right?
Correct.
So the, the, the thing that I like about the scenario, or at least the, the mindset of the scenario, whether we want to modify the numbers or not. You know, that Zach brought up last time, the, the comment about, well, what if we end up leasing the space? And we, you know, does that change the, the kind of bond we need to make or not? I think that this concept of us putting money in from the general fund. Alleviates that concern, no matter who it is that we might end up leasing it to, if we should decide to lease it. Because. By paying cash for it. We're essentially. Not financing a certain portion of the building that could be leased, does that make any sense?
We're, we're lifting that potential restriction.
We're lifting that potential restriction, so I think the, the philosophy of putting some money in from general towards the price. And using less bond funds. Towards the ultimate purchase. And then using the remaining bond funds for capital improvements, I think that is a sound. Strategy, now whether it turns out that. We need to spend all seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. On capital improvements or not, I guess Justin's gonna learn that this week or wherever, when he gets the more detail from. Partners in architecture. But it, but, but, but what's, what's the other thing that's really evident, Justin, and you haven't gotten to it, is that. Is that even with. Even with all of these. Items in yellow shown into the budget. If you look on page twenty-eight. The net of revenues. Less the appropriations or the expenditures. Is projected to be two seventy-six. In other words, in other words, there's money left over from the. From that, so I mean, I mean, we, we could, we could look at that and say, well, maybe we don't need to issue two and a half million. Because there's an extra two hundred thousand in this year's budget, maybe we only issue two, two point three. This is where the scenarios and, and council's creativity. Have some options. Correct me if I'm wrong, Justin.
No, you're, you're correct. Um, in, in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see it's, um, a hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred. But that's because, um. I included an additional hundred thousand up above. As a potential placeholder for. A potential capital project. If you take that out. You know, if, if, if we don't end up needing that and take it out, then you're up to, you know, two hundred and thirty-six thousand. And this will be your twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, it increases to two thirty-six.
And, and the, the other thing that isn't factored in here either is, you know, we're, if we're contributing the three hundred thousand towards the purchase. And we're lifting that restriction of being able to rent out the building. This, this scenario doesn't factor in any potential revenues that we could get. From the building.
From building, you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah. That depends on how it's also. Modified to separate it from our. Functions as well. If that's desire.
I don't need a hundred percent dependent on that, I think. I think there are many different ways that we could. Rent out parts of that building.
Yep. Yeah, and that's, you know, that's for future discussion, I think, I think the point I was trying to make and, and the, 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 the funny thing is whenever I look at the budget. The first thing I look at is I look at the revenue number to see if it went up from fiscal year to fiscal year and then I always scroll to the end. And I look to see if there's any money left over in what we're projecting. And, um. It's just a good, I think it's a good. It, it shows that we have some flexibility in what we're doing. This is what I, is what I like about it and. You know, we've got time to think about that and let that roll around and. You know, figure out where we're comfortable, if, you know, if we do decide to go forward, um, but it, it fits and it fits in a way that. You know, that doesn't. Negatively impact our residents, I don't think. I think it's good and it sets us up well for the next building improvement. Or, you know, newness, whatever it ends up being.
So that three hundred thousand dollars, that's coming from our.
From our general fund reserves.
Right, so then, so then what did that take us down to?
If you look on page twenty-eight there, Jamie, at the bottoms in that, in that same area.
Yep.
There's a beginning fund balance.
Yep.
Justin, you can talk through the numbers, but, um, I would, cause I don't have the column headings in front of me, is it the second line item in, the two point two-six-five is our beginning fund balance at the beginning of?
Yeah, so, 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 uh, column one. Is, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty activity. Column two is twenty twenty-one projected activity. So. The three hundred thousand would potentially come out of this fiscal year's budget. And so you see the beginning fund balance. From this fiscal year's budget and then what the ending. Fund balance would be that, that one point nine five eight million.
So, so he's projecting with the three hundred thousand as a payment.
Right.
That, that as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, meaning in two months from now. We will have general funds reserves of one nine five eight six.
With, with that three hundred thousand dollar payment.
Right.
Right. And that, we had this conversation a while back about how some of that maybe is. Like appropriated, like there's different types of money in that general fund, some is, but, like council, some has. Yeah. Those are all free money.
Correct.
Yeah, some of it's restricted and some of it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Marie, you, you just put, put together your, your report. Do you remember how much of that is, is, is undesignedated?
Well, there's two hundred and twelve committed for possible sewer fund stabilization. Not committed, sorry, assigned, which is done by staff, so that's not a council. Um, Courtney wanted to do that. And there's a hundred and. Either forty thousand or a hundred and eighty thousand that is committed by council to the fire station. And then everything else is available.
I believe it's the hundred and eighty-seven that we sold the property for.
Correct, that, yeah, a hundred and eighty-seven.
Which is, which is shown, if you see, there's a line item in the, in one of those column years. That's under revenue, there's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, I think that's it, that's the proceeds from that sale.
That would be it.
If, if, if you go up to page, um. Sorry, I'm scrolling up. Maybe Justin will find it before I do. All right, it's on, on, on page eighteen. Of the. Vertical budget.
Yep.
You'll see a sale of fixed assets for one eighty-six four hundred. That was the sale of the, the. That was the sale of the the Dan Hoy property for the Avalon project. And as part of that sale, it was designated into for future fire station.
Yeah, and it's earned a little interest along along the way.
So we're about ten minutes to eight. Sorry if I'm shouting, I hear an echo. What we we've been through the general fund, Justin, I think you did a very good job taking us through that. I I know it's a lot of work.
And I'm sorry, I didn't get it out until yesterday. It did take me a little bit longer than than I anticipated that it would.
Can I pop in here? He worked all weekend on it. You know, and and he he's he's being very quiet about it, but quite frankly, usually this is a job that's done by two and a half people. The manager, the assistant manager with assistance from me, and he did it all by himself because I really didn't provide a whole lot of assistance until after the fact, because I was so buried under my own workload. So don't be modest, Justin. You worked very hard on this.
Well, it's a good, it's an excellent start. It's an excellent draft, Justin, and I think I think what, you know, next next Wednesday, we've got planned for our next session. Do you think you'll have the first cut of water and sewer and streets for that meeting?
Potentially. If if not, at least a couple of them.
Okay. Well, that would be great. Whatever you can provide would be great. I think we can we can also, you know, look back at this. It doesn't look like Zach was able to join us today, so there might be some things we need to, you know, go over and reinforce or just discuss again a little bit. And if we just let this roll around in our heads a little bit for a week, I'm sure we will come up with some questions or ideas too, so. Is this a good stopping point for everybody or?
Sean, can can we mention the what we discussed about the meeting data made?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So you want to do it, Marie, or you want me to?
Oh, you can go ahead.
All right, so so Marie sent out a week ago a sort of a save the date of May eighth to have a meet the candidates for them, if you will, for the city manager search effort that we've been undertaking. And when when we originally envisioned the idea, we were thinking that and Zach's not here, but Zach gets credit for some of the idea here or most of the idea here. He thought it'd be a good idea to have the candidates come through and meet with the different employee bases, so to speak, so the office staff and then kind of get a tour of the of the city campuses, if you will, and meet with public works and water and sewer. So the idea is that each candidate would get an hour, an hour and a half with the office staff, an hour, an hour and a half with DPW Public Works Water Sewer, and then an hour with council so that we could meet the candidates as well. And we were hoping to do it all in sort of a rotational thing on on May eighth. But a lot of the key staff are not available on May eighth. So Marie and I spoke this week and what we're thinking is that on May eighth, we'll do the council portion of it. We will let each of the three candidates come in for an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes and give council a chance to meet them, talk to them, learn about the background, sort of a, you know, an informal or an interview of sorts. And then sometime between now and May eighth, Marie will schedule those three candidates to do the the meetings during the week with staff during a regular work week and Dan would be leading the part of the tour that brings the candidates around to water sewer and public works. Marie would lead the part of the tour inside the office as the senior member of staff. And then on Saturday, May eighth, I've asked Marie to join council as we meet with them because she was also on the the search committee, so she would participate on the eighth as well. We're thinking depending everybody's availability, that maybe we would do that starting around lunchtime and go till like four o'clock. So sort of a middle of the afternoon effort instead of a first thing in the morning to accommodate some of the schedules we've heard. So that's kind of the tentative plan for May eighth. Marie, please jump in if I miss something or if I was unclear on something.
You got it.
That sound okay to everybody? We want to, we want to make sure council has a chance to meet. They would be public meetings. I even asked Marie to reach out to Jeff Evans and see if the thirty five fifteen broad space was available to have council meet the candidates at sort of a neutral territory for everybody. We don't know, we don't know the location yet, but does that sound okay to everybody on that's on the call?
You're planning on in person, though.
Yeah, we were planning on in person and figuring that that would be a way to spread out. I would I would say to do it outside, Jamie, but then April twenty first would occur and on my luck, we'd schedule it, we'd get this big snow, so I think we could do it in person. You know, with thirty five fifteen broad, there's plenty of room for seven or eight people to spread out in that big room was kind of my thought. Can we ask, can I ask the question of how many have had at least one, oh, no. See, I'll reverse it. How many have not had any COVID shots yet? On the council?
I have not had any.
I'm getting my second one on Friday.
I'll not be down there, Sean, at that time.
Well, Donna, what I was thinking.
I'll zoom it.
That's right. Donna, we we would set up, we would set up some technology and you would be able to participate virtually.
Oh, I'm not concerned about that, but I'm just saying I will not be. In fact, I had an evaluation today, so it'll be into May before I'll be back.
Okay. Okay. Donna, you will miss your beautiful magnolia tree. It's spectacular out there in your front yard. Yeah, it's great.
You all go buy and enjoy it. Sit down under if you'd like.
It was it was just spectacular this year. So was Julia's on the corner and John editors here too, but your yours is just great.
I see a tail.
I know we have a just a couple of minutes. I had one thing I shared with Justin. I don't know if he can bring it up on his screen, just so sort of back to the budget thing. So I've written a number, you know, research papers coming from academia, and so you can write a whole lot of numbers and tables, but oftentimes the thing that resonates with people reading your paper is some sort of visual. I was quick, you know, just doing some quick Googling. This is on the ICMO website. They talk about innovative ways of doing budgeting. And the Seattle example, there were three other examples. I don't know. My guesses are using, you know, specific software programs that, you know, pre-populate all this stuff for them, but it looks like these are ways that they're making the budget both more accessible to the public because it's, you know, it's physically available on a webpage and it's interactive, it's clickable, you know, you click on this. You can follow these links. You can click on the Seattle one and then you click on this part of the pie chart and then it breaks it down and you know, so I think it would be conveying a lot of the same information we have in these tables. I don't know, I'm not suggesting this to be done immediately, but even just as a council member interpreting information for me, I'm sometimes a little bit more visual too. Or I know in the past I've asked questions like, what percentage of our budget is X? And so anyways, just I guess food for thought in the future of, yep, go ahead, Marie.
I actually just met or zoomed with a company this week called ClearGov that has a product that does exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
Um, it is pricey. It's about thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars a year for the modules that would create what you see there. Create a budget document and help us do capital improvements. The one that you're talking about right there, I think by itself was like eleven ish. I did ask Michelle and Justin if they would have time to see the presentation with this gentleman that I saw because there are things that could be used in other areas besides just budgeting that may work. So it is something that we are looking at. I don't think it's something that could be implemented for this budget. We're kind of too far in. But it might be a possibility for a future year.
Okay, that sounds good. You said ClearGov? I think I've heard of that.
ClearGov, yeah. There's several of them out there. He he just happened to be the most persistent. So I finally said, finally got tired of him calling and emailing said, okay, fine, I'll watch it. So.
Right, right. Cool.
Jamie, I did try to put some percentages of that kind of stuff in the newsletter when I did it. I just didn't do it in a bar graph for formation. So but you're right, those are visuals are cool. So thanks for bringing that up.
Sure thing.
Okay, any other questions?
Just double checking. Am I good to proceed on May eighth from twelve to four?
I might need to be a little late. I'll do what I can. I get I get our sun down for his afternoon nap. So twelve thirty one is better, but I could just try to get him down earlier.
Well, why not? If we have to shift it a little bit, it isn't gonna, it's the afternoon, Jamie, so we're trying to make sure.
Yeah, one o'clock would for sure work.
Okay, I think the only thing we I need to double check tomorrow with is Zach because he's not here.
Right. Okay. Well, good. Well, thanks for everybody's time tonight, Justin and staff. Thanks for joining us. Anybody have anything last minute to add or if not, we'll we'll see you on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Night.
Night, everybody.
Night, everyone.